One, two, three, four, five, six. We need one more. Oh, seven. We have seven.
We got seven, Marty. Thank you. All right. So we're going to start this session on the strategic plan. And we have Marty Smith here coming to forth. We also have a lot of the same players, Teresa, and with some new ones, Ms. Nixon. Is she coming or no?
So we have our LT members there along the side to provide support today. So if there are questions, we can certainly answer those questions. We're here.
But Lady gets to stay up here for another couple of hours. All right.
And I actually have a feeling we'll be done much before then.
All right. So at this work session, we're going to have the opportunity to review the enhancements that have been made to our strategic plan since the November 19th school board meeting. And I will let Mr. Smith or you're starting?
Yeah, I'm going to take it. And Lady is here for support. So good afternoon, everyone. I am very excited to bring to you the finalization of our strategic plan. We've been working on the plan for close to 18 months. And we, again, are very excited. We've had meetings with close to 10 of our 12 board members. And we've included a lot of the information from those meetings in our plan. Before I do start with the presentation today, I just want to give a nod to Mr. James Patterson, who is joining us today. He is here with the county and is leading the county's strategic planning efforts. And so he is here to see how we make our sausage. And I'm working on the strategic committee, the executive committee, to help the county as they develop their strategic plan. So we're glad that James is here. And so is Ms. Darren at COFAX today. We're going to provide you some updates from November from our last strategic plan work session with the board. And as usual, we start with our one pager, our poster. This is a document that we have, again, sent to all of our schools. And one thing that we're seeing as a leadership team is that this document is driving many conversations that we're having around a theory of action for student improvement. It's driving a lot of the conversations that you'll see as we bring information around boundaries in the boundary research study. We've tried to align all of our work with the strategic plan. As Ms. Corbett Sanders will note, that this document has driven the work of our budget process. And so we are starting to see reap the benefits of the time and effort that we've put into developing these four goal areas and eight desired outcomes. And we're hopeful that the board will see the benefits of that time and effort as well. So you can see that some of the things that we've done since November and after meeting with all of our board members is that we've updated our three-year baselines. And so we've ensured that all of our available data is included in the baseline worksheet that's also attached to today's presentation. We've provided metrics with the percentages and counts. That was feedback that we received at the last work session. We've changed some of the headers for elimination of gaps to include those metrics which address access, opportunity, and attainment or achievement. We've provided and updated our AAP metrics. We have a metric on student achievement. And we've also changed the way that we identify students who are receiving those AAP services. We've updated some portrait of a graduate language that provides a bit more clarity to the language that we use on a regular basis here in Fairfax County. And we've added and accelerated aspiration to reduce the number of temporary classrooms. And it's tied to a tenure plan that we have in the county. And so for advanced academic programs, and this is, again, based on input from our board members, we made the following changes to the metrics. And you'll see that as we go to the next slide. But I do want to preface that the participation or access metrics now include all students who receive Level 4 instruction instead of just those students who are Level 4 eligible. And so with that, that would include all students at the elementary level who might be flexing into Level 4 classrooms and yet might not be eligible for those services but are still receiving those services. And at the middle school level, it's those students who are taking the Four Honors courses. So again, students who may not be eligible for services but are receiving those services. The next bullet shows that three metrics were added to address opportunities for students to receive AAP instruction. One of those is the expansion of our Young Scholars program. And if there are questions, I know that Dr. Presidio will be able to answer many of those questions around our Young Scholars programs. The number of schools offering local Level 4 instruction, and the percentage of classrooms where students are receiving instructional experiences using the AAP curriculum. And we'll explain that a little bit as we go through the next slide. Our slides are kind of small today. I don't know if there's a way for us to...
We have access online, so we can follow online.
Okay, so we can follow online.
Oh, there we go.
That might help a bit. So as you look here, we have readjusted our metrics around the aspirational statement of participation and performance rates will be similarly high across student groups. And so we have an opportunity gap that we want to address. And that's really around the number of schools offering Young Scholars programs, the number of schools offering local Level 4, and the percentage of classrooms where those students are receiving experiences. If you look at the Young Scholars programs, we currently have as the three-year baseline 62% of our elementary schools, or at this point, 88 out of the 141 schools that are offering those Young Scholars programs. We would like to see our 1820 target be at 106 out of the 141 elementary schools with a 2224 aspiration of all of our elementary schools offering some type of Young Scholars program. If you look at the second metric around offering local Level 4 services, our current three-year baseline is at 48% of our schools, or 54 out of the 112, 54 out of the 112 schools that are not centers currently are offering local Level 4 services. We'd like to see that increase to 73 out of 112 for our 1820 target with then an aspiration for 2224 of all of those remaining schools that are not centers offering some type of local Level 4 instruction. And then lastly, we have a metric that's under development where we want to measure the percentage of classrooms where students are receiving instructional experiences using the AAP curriculum. Currently, our AART teachers, they provide a report to our Advanced Academic Office on the types of units that are being taught within each of our elementary schools. And so we feel that we will be able to actually develop some baseline data to see the types of lessons that are being taught in schools and at what grade level so that we can get a baseline of how many classrooms are actually implementing the curriculum, how many teachers are using the curriculum to plan lessons, and then start to build some metrics and targets so that all of our elementary classrooms, and so at one point, the 2224 aspiration would be that all of our classrooms, those students would have access to that curriculum. Now, there are some implications when we look at the expansion of the Young Scholars program, local Level 4 instruction, and looking at providing more opportunities for students in classrooms. And the board has already started to have some conversations around expanding the number of AARTs or those Advanced Academic Resource teachers in our schools. So the implications for that is as we push out more programs for students, we'll need more of those teachers in the buildings to meet the needs of students. And as we have the expectation that our teachers are planning and using the curriculum, that there will be more opportunities for team teaching in classrooms, more opportunities for those Advanced Academic Resource teachers to help teachers develop lessons during their collaborative learning meetings so that they can ensure that these strategies and units are being pushed out so that students have more opportunities to take advantage of that Our next metric is our access gap. And if you remember before when we brought this access metric to the board, we were comparing student groups to other student groups. And we had baselines based on the student groups that had the highest percentage of participation, and then comparing other groups to that participation level. What we've done here is that we've taken that cohort of students that we spoke of earlier, and that these are the students, the percentage of students who are participating in AAP programs, and we're comparing our subgroup performance, our student group performance, to the county average of 25%. And so you can see with our targets that we have baselines for all of our student groups within targets for the 1820 school year. That gets us closer to that 25% target with an aspiration or an interim aspiration in 2224 where all of our groups would be at or above 25%, which would be, again, that countywide average. And then we would see that the aspiration for 2830 is that we would have an equal participation across all of our student groups. So that is our access metric. It, again, is very different than our previous because we are comparing our student groups to a standard and not to one another. And lastly, we've included an achievement gap that shows the percentage of our AAP students demonstrating advanced performance in reading and mathematics on SOL tests in grades three through eight. Again, it's the same group of students who we've talked about in this larger universe. And you can see there that we do have differences with regard to our current performance for students who are performing advanced on SOLs in reading and mathematics. And so we would like to see those numbers moving closer toward that 100%. And that is the same 100% that we've used for student groups and other student success metrics as it relates to the SOLs. Our next change is around our Portrait of a Graduate attributes. And we've changed some of the language around what we've been calling capstone projects. You can see that we have some older language that we had in the previous plan and some new language that we would like to share with the board. And we've decided to change this language because, again, the terminology is something that's understood currently within our schools and currently used within our Instructional Services Department. So our old language focused on those grade level expectations for Portrait of a Graduate outcomes, capstones at particular grade levels. We would like to change that to those outcomes being measured by student performance on end-of-year Portrait of a Graduate Presentations of Learning. And those Presentations of Learning could include capstone experiences, but there are other types of Presentations of Learning that would meet that particular metric. And again, within the individual metrics themselves, we've changed the language to expand upon simply having a capstone project, but that you would have an end-of-year POG Presentation of Learning, which would include, could include, capstone projects. And again, this is how it looks on the updated worksheet. And lastly, for the updates that we've included in the strategic plan update since our last meeting, a major one was around trailers and the use of temporary classrooms in the county. And at that last meeting, Mr. Moon sat right where he's sitting now. Mr. Moon, you're like me. And at the leadership table, I'm always in the same seat as well. And he asked the question about our plan to reduce the number of trailers and that it was just unacceptable to have the previous metrics that we shared with the board. And you can see our previous targets were that we were going to have a 10% reduction in two years, or that we were going to reduce our number of trailers from our three-year baseline average to 735, and that we would have no temporary classrooms by 2038. Our new target is a much more aggressive plan. We have a new target of reducing by 57% in two years to 480 temporary classrooms from the baseline with zero temporary classrooms by 2028. And you can see on the final bullet here that this, the addition of this target in the strategic plan will actually help spur some conversations that we're going to have with the board at the end of the month and in March around boundary decisions and the value that the board will place on different priorities for making those boundary decisions. We know that in order to get to this rather aggressive goal, that we're going to have to rely upon more than just additional dollars from our Board of Supervisors and the CIP. We know that the board will have to make decisions around program placement. We'll have to make decisions around boundaries and overall capacity within our schools. And so we are looking forward to sharing some information with you. Ms. Aruda will be back again once we share that at the end of the month. And again, we know that this will drive a conversation that we're also going to be having with our Board of Supervisors at the end of the month. And as you can see here, this is how it will be noted in the updated plan. And lastly, we end on our one pager. As we're coming to the end of this process, and we'll be presenting to the board at our next board meeting, the updates from the plan and presenting to the community, I do want to take a moment to thank everyone who has helped walk us and get us to this point. I know that Ms. Aruda and her ORC team have been, played an integral role in getting us to this point. All of my colleagues on the leadership team, all of our colleagues within our departments who have had much input to this plan, our principals, our parents, our community groups. It's been truly a collaborative effort to get us to this point. I thank you all for the individual time that you have given us as staff. When you think about two-by-twos and the complex schedules that you all have, and to take that time to come in to walk through and give feedback multiple times on a plan, it shows your dedication to the plan. And so we really do appreciate that. And so this poster is a culmination of all of our work, all of our efforts, and we are very hopeful that we will be able to begin the implementation process of this plan. We are already beginning to design those action plans that our departments will be using. We're looking forward to our upcoming premier workforce presentation, which will use our updated template because we know that moving forward, we're going to use this as the backbone for future presentations to the board. I've had an opportunity to have conversations with Dr. Nixon about that work, about the content, and we're aligning that to the new template. We feel that this plan, these reporting structures, will provide you as board members in the community with much more information about the work that we're doing, much more information about the individual efforts that are happening within departments and schools, and give you much more meaningful data that will help you set policy and help make decisions for the school system. So with that, my presentation has come to an end, and we are ready to answer any questions that you might have about our updates to the strategic plan.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I have three board members so far, starting with Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Kiesgmar, and then Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. This is excellent work, and I am so thrilled to actually see us coalescing around metrics and then the linkage between what our metrics are and how we spend money. This is wonderful. I do have a couple of questions, and they really focus on a couple of things. One, regarding the AAP, and I'm glad you made some changes there. Little concerned that people won't understand on Slide 6 that we have two different sets of numbers when we talk about elementary school. And so we really do need to be a little more clear of why we have different numbers for schools with young scholars and those that have local Level 4 instruction. So if we can get that, kind of clarifying it in the way we present it, I think that would be helpful because essentially, we do have Young Scholars programs in some of the schools that we also have centers. And I think that's what you're alluding to in the top.
Yes, and so you look at the top, and that's all...
Fun, I only get three minutes.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Next, on the 25% metrics, again, with access to the opportunity of AAP. A little confusing because what it looks like is that you're going to have 25% of each subgroup, and that's going to be more than 25%. And so it's almost a two-phase process, as we believe, if I'm correct in interpreting this, that 25% of the students in Fairfax County Public Schools will have access to the Advanced Academic curriculum. That's your objective?
So currently, I'll let you ask your question.
And within that 25% of each subgroup, that's how you get there. Then on Page 10, when we talk about our temporary classrooms, but then we talk about trailers in particular, we may want to clarify where the modulators fit in. And then, and this is just my, I just don't like the metric. And you and I have talked about this, Mr. Smith. The metric of within $1,000 of the WABE average, it's not really a good metric because it, first off, we've got, you know, a mixed bag of nuts in the WABE guide as far as different comparisons. So the average is kind of distorted that way. And our own cost basis is built into the WABE average, so that in itself makes it distorted. I would love, and it's not enough to keep me from voting for this, but I would love longer term for us to have a different measure which says something more along the line of effectiveness of our dollar spend and how much is in our classrooms versus elsewhere or something like that. But those are just my comments, and I'm within my three minutes.
Thanks.
And to answer the question on Slide 7, where we talk about 25% of each subgroup, and so the current average in the county is that 25% of our students are currently accessing some type of program. We'd like to see that number go at or above 25% for our individual subgroups. We also know that as we push out more opportunities in our elementary classrooms, that that number will go up. So as more classrooms are, more teachers are utilizing the curriculum and creating lessons, we'll see those numbers increase.
So, Mr. Smith, if we can kind of add some language on that, that would be helpful because it's a bit confusing.
We can certainly clarify that. And we can clarify on the previous page the differences in numbers between 141 schools versus 112 schools. And then lastly, with, of course, with WABE, I know that I'm going to channel Ms. Burden here a bit if I can, but we know that our WABE schools, we all use the same criteria as we're looking to develop, we follow the same rules essentially with WABE. And so we feel that that is a good indicator, and we can also make it a better indicator by adding the effectiveness of dollars used in the classroom. And as we think about fully implementing the strategic decision-making process, we will have much more information about the effectiveness of how we've spent those dollars in the classrooms, and we can certainly see us building that into a future metric.
What about my temporary classrooms?
Oh, and the temporary classrooms, the modulators, we will build that information in. Modulators are capital assets, and so we will certainly clarify that for our public so that we know that we're only talking about those temporaries or trailers and that we're not addressing modulators in the system.
And in the future, we may come back for the modulators.
All right. Ms. Kiesgmar.
Okay, I will state all my questions first. I want to start with the AART teachers. I know that there's been some questions back and forth, and I want to make sure that we understand what they are doing. I dealt with someone that I think was that when my kids were in elementary school. I want to make sure I make a distinction. It may not be the same. I don't know when they came into existence. With respect to how we get these, I'm looking at some of these numbers, and I'm wondering whether we're focusing on how we identify people, children, for these programs, if that, if the AART plays a role in that. My phone is buzzing, I'm sorry. Okay, so I'm, yeah, I'm a little unclear on how we plan to move the needle. One of the sets of numbers that bothered me was, it's in two different reports. One is the finalizing the strategic plan, and the other is this one. It talks about the achievement gap and how many children are participating in the Advanced Academics. And when you look at students in this other chart that are doing well, are reading above grade level, it actually comes to about half for Asian students, but a much greater discrepancy with respect to African Americans and Hispanics. And so I would like for us to kind of look at, I know we all know that the achievement gap is there, but this suggests to me that we may have some talented students that are not being identified. And so I'm wondering also how we're going to deal with the identification process. And then finally, let's see. Okay, and I also wanted to shout out for Braddock Elementary. I think that they do a really good job of making sure all our kids get exposed to some of that higher learning. And how do we plan on making sure that happens on a larger scale?
And so I will certainly ask Dr. Presidio to weigh in on how our AARTs are used in the classroom. I know that as a former elementary principal, and when I first started teaching in the county, they were what we called our gifted and talented teachers, who are now AARTs, and they work to push into classrooms, to provide lessons for all of our students. They are involved in the eligibility process, as we see it in Fairfax County. They are an integral part of the work that we do to identify and provide services for our Advanced Academic students.
Before you go on, then, so it is basically the same, I think, as it was when my kids were being considered for these programs. And I think that we have to look at the degree of fidelity, the degree of the fidelity. I mean, how consistent it is. I know that there were parents who were concerned about whether their kids were getting this higher level, and they were handing out worksheets. That doesn't sound like what you are talking about. And so I'm concerned about whether we have some inconsistency from school to school.
And I can let Dr. Presidio weigh in on the work. I know that the AART office meets regularly with our teachers and that they've been working much more closely together to get that, to get consistency across our schools. We know that there are still differences in what teachers do in different buildings. We know that as we look at this, the metric on expanding AP experiences in all of our classrooms, that would be incumbent upon us to work more closely with our AARTs to make sure that they are doing the push into classrooms, that they are helping with our, planning with our teachers, that they could be team teaching, there are a variety of things that they could be doing within the schools. But that would be a larger conversation that the AART office would have with those teachers.
I think now, I mean, for the conversation today, the main point to kind of add to what Mr. Smith is saying is that there is variance, of course, in what's happening. But remember that we don't have full-time Advanced Academic Resource teachers in all of our schools, right? So that is, I mean, that is the major contributing factor to why we have variation. All of the things that Mr. Smith talked about is exactly what we want our AART teachers to do, and it's exactly what they aspire to do. It's everything for... It's everything from curriculum planning with teams before instruction is delivered as part of the collaborative team process, to delivering direct instruction, to facilitating the identification process. In fact, our AARTs are required to submit identification every year for students who are in the Young Scholars Program, or families that they think maybe might not have the agency to submit identification referrals themselves. But if you're a half-time Advanced Academic Resource teacher, your ability to do all of those things, obviously, is limited in terms of a school that might have a full-time teacher, so.
So can I ask you, the Young Scholars Program, I wasn't familiar with that when my kids were growing up. Are those in schools? Those programs tend to be in schools where you have a higher level of diversity?
They do tend to be in those schools, but we believe that they need to be in all schools, because while one school might have a higher percentage of historically underrepresented students, it doesn't mean that, you know, another school that might have a lower percentage doesn't need to provide the same service to those students. So that's why we've added that as one of the metrics to the strategic plan, is to try to, as quickly as possible, get to 100% of our schools offering the Young Scholars Program. And the Young Scholars Program also contains a lot of additional benefits, not just during the school year, but also the main piece that we provide during the summer is enrichment programs and opportunities for those students in the summer to extend the school year for them. So there's a lot of benefits if we can get those programs in all of our schools.
I certainly support the Young Scholars Program being available. I think I've made a number of comments before about when you have a lower number of a particular class of a student, they can easily be overlooked. And in those situations, and you don't have a Young Scholars Program, I'm not the only parent where I know I've had to have these conversations repeatedly, and the only way to break through was to go ahead and cough up the, you know, close to $500 to have your kid tested. And so we, I think we have a lot of work to do with respect of professional development in this, in this particular respect. It's a matter of how we see our kids. So I would certainly support the expansion of the Young Scholars Program.
All your questions have been answered, Ms. Keys-Gamara.
There was a question about expanding the Braddock work, and again, as we look at the expansion of AART teachers and using different school sites as sites of excellence, where school teams can go and principals can go and talk with administrators and teachers to see just how they're doing that work, having those individuals in schools to help inform practices within schools, help work with principals with regard to the planning process, help our teachers as it relates to professional development, it would be important to have those expanded AART teachers in our buildings.
And I don't know if this is part of the discussion or not with respect to, I know Belvedere Elementary has the IB program at the elementary level. I don't know if this is part of the consideration or not, I just kind of-
Ms. Keys-Gamara, one thing I want you to note, Dr. Ivy has concluded, I believe you finished, a regional review with each region assistant superintendent, going school by school on every piece of data, looking at who's beating expectations, who's meeting expectations, and who may still need some support to get to the level of expectations that we expect. We know who the outliers are, and we need to take those best practices now and make sure through regional leadership and through my leadership and the deputy, that the best practices are identified and then are providing support for other schools where we're not seeing those practices at the same level of implementation. So it's happening, we are tightening up our process for region reviews to look at data and come up with what are we doing to get schools so that all the folks are outperforming expectations for their schools like a Braddock Elementary is doing.
I really appreciate that, and I promise I'm done, but I want to make sure we are hearing from, you know, some of the folks that have been out on the field in our community, like MSAOC, that particular committee. I think they can add a lot to that discussion and hopefully can coordinate with you, Dr. Ivy.
All right, thank you. Ms. Strauss, followed by Mr. Moon.
Thank you. On the page where you, the Advanced Academic Programs, I particularly liked the bullet, looking at percentage of classrooms where students receive instructional experiences using AAP curriculum. I do like the changes in approach here because it is access to better learning strategies that is important to kids, and it's, I always feel it's not necessarily identifying everybody as gifted, but it is, do all children have access to many of the instructional approaches in the curriculum that the AAP curriculum offers? And I think that these metrics speak more clearly to that through particularly opportunity and access and young scholars and all the rest of that, so that our drive is not necessarily on identifying everybody, but it is access to appropriate stimulating curriculum. And our teachers are important to that. The one question that I have, two questions. One is training teachers in AAP strategies, because that's critical where we are with that. And then I believe that the state has language now on evaluating presentations of learning because this also speaks to some change language in capstone projects, which again is important strategies and inquiry-based learning. So those are the two questions.
Yeah, so we've adjusted, and so we've been ahead of the state as we've built that into our strategic plan, and that there is some language around evaluating those presentations of learning. They're referring to them as capstones, which is why we were going to bring you language around presentations of learning, but we wanted to align ourselves with the state so that there was still the understanding of capstones. And as we work to expand this in our schools, work to bring more of our schools onboard, we will certainly be developing that metric. Currently, we're establishing, it's under development and establishing those baselines, and so we will be doing that. With regard to the training of teachers, if you remember, I guess it's been about seven years ago that I sat right here in this seat and had a conversation with the board about the work that we were looking at in the old Cluster 1, and a lot of that work centered-
Did it.
A lot of that work centered around the training of teachers. And so we used our funds to create opportunities, worked very closely with the AART office to create academy opportunities for our teachers, for our elementary teachers. We provided opportunities to attend summer institutes so that they would learn, again, how to implement these strategies within their classrooms and learn more about the curriculum, as well as other curricula that we have out there that is equally as good and as strong as the AAP curriculum. And then, I'm sounding a bit like a broken record, but the more AARTs that we have in our buildings, the more opportunities we have for that one-to-one with a teacher, working with another teacher, to help implement that curriculum in the building, and to also do in-school professional development on those professional development days. So PD and training is very important to this work, and having somebody who's trained very well within a building will help further this work.
Thank you. It was very successful. We had local Level 4 in every elementary school with trained teachers, plus we had centers, so it worked.
All right, Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. I know that I have about three minutes. If I'm not done in three minutes, put me on the callback list. Okay, on four points, first one on the temporary classrooms, my favorite topic. Thank you for revising the goals. I wasn't sure that I could survive to see until, could survive until 2038, to see all the trailers to go, but I think I can confidently say that I can live to see all the trailers gone by-
You'll be on the board still, Mr. Moon, right?
I don't know about that. I don't know about that, but I'll make sure that Mr. Marty Smith doesn't retire until that happens.
We will, we will, we will come and allow you to drive the truck off of the site with the last trailer, Mr. Moon.
Wonderful, wonderful. I need to, I need to work on my license with that. With that, I sent in, okay, thank you. Thank you. I sent in a question over the weekend to clarify employee retention rate.
Yes.
The three-year base, baseline for teachers, 83%, which means we lose 17%. Is that, is that yearly average rate of retention in three-year baseline window?
So we've taken that three-year baseline, and so you do see an 83%. If you think back to previous reports, we've talked about our 90% retention rate, and we then talk about the fact that there are reasons why teachers separate from the school system and why we'd want to have some teachers separate.
You are eating into my time, so you may want to wait until I'm done, okay?
I'll wait until you're-
Okay, thank you, thank you.
We have to get comfortable with this new process as well.
The second is, this one is another, a point of clarification, which is on page 26, goal number three, premier workforce, when metric is diversity of hired teachers compared to the diversity of qualified applicants. And I was looking at, maybe I should have asked this question at the last time, which I, but I didn't. School years, 18 to 20 target, and I see, for example, a black and white, male and female, we have these percentage points from SY 22 to 24. The way I understood this was, for example, black, when it says three percentage points from school years 22 to 24 aspiration, it is like a three percentage less than what I would see for SY 22, 24 aspiration, but 18 to 20, we won't know what 20 to 24 aspiration will show. So how would you know? The three percentage is less than unknown.
So are you done?
No, I'm done, but you can, you know, you can answer that later on. And I understand that there are maybe some legal limitations, which I, I mean, I'm accepting for the time being, but I'm still disappointed about what I see on page 25 with a metric about diversity of qualified teacher applicant compared to diversity of Fairfax County teachers when we are only doing whites and non-whites, and we don't have further subgroups based upon ethnicity. When we do subgroups based on ethnicity for student academic achievements, but we don't do that for hiring. So I am, I mean, I am going to support this because we have debated about, discussed and debated about this long enough, so I'm going to let it go, but I'm still disappointed because where we are lacking the most for teacher diversity is Asians and Hispanic. And in this way, it will take, in my estimate, half a century before we see our teaching force representing the diversity of the county, and I'm not going to leave another half a century. Now you can answer my question.
Okay, so your quick answers on page 24, and thank you for the questions, Mr. Moon. So when you look at the 83% for the retention rate, that is a three-year average, it's the yearly rate based on the three-year average. So we've also included within that the retirements and transfers. We're going to pull those numbers for retirements and transfers out, so that will get us closer to that 90% rate that we've been used to sharing with the board over time. So yes, that is the three-year baseline, and if you average that over that three years, this is the retention rate based on those who have separated, those who have retired and transferred. We're going to take out retirees and transfers, only look at those separations.
And then for your question on page 26 of the document, the, we, I think, as you said, we can't predict who we will be having apply for positions in 2020. So the three percentage points from the 2020 to 2024 aspiration, which is to have it be equivalent between the qualified and the hired, is that we would be within three percentage points of that at the end of 2020.
At the end of 2020, we won't know what 22 to 24 will show, so three percentage less than that is a three percentage less than something we don't know.
So-
How could that be a-
Because in 2022, 24, it's supposed to be equivalent, so-
Equivalent to the applicant pool.
To the applicant-
But we don't know what the applicant pool will be in 22, 24. Until we get there, until we get there.
So maybe, maybe we're not saying it in the best, in the clearest way possible. So if you look at the three-year baseline, right now, we're five percentage points below qualified applicants for the black subgroup. And if you look at the two numbers, when you look at the black subgroup, it's really subtracting, right now, the qualified applicants are 9%. Am I getting the right numbers? The qualified applicants are 12%, and the hired teachers are 8%. So the difference between that is, it's probably a rounding issue that it gets to 5%. So right now, there's a five percentage point difference. By the end of 2020, whatever the numbers are in terms of the percentage who are applying and are considered qualified, we want to see that shrink to only a three percentage point difference, with the intent that by 2022, 2024, it will be equivalent. So if we have 12% who are qualified, we would be hiring 12% in 2022, 24. But in 2020, to hit our target, we would only need to be three percentage points away from that or 9% if it stayed at 12%.
So if you had simply stayed at three percentage from qualified applicants-
From, yeah.
That would have been, become clearer.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we can make it clearer in this, yes.
And then the last piece about the pool process on page 25. We note that we've brought information around the diversity of our employees, and we'll continue to do that. It's part of our equity profile, and you'll be able to see what that looks like by school. And as we set targets so that we don't then look as if we are setting quotas for hiring, we would then try to compare our overall diversity and ensure that we have processes in place that would ensure that our principals are using a pool of qualified candidates and using practices that would allow them to hire candidates in a blind fashion and still pull that same diversity out of the pool and not, and not keep people from being hired in the system. So it's a combination of knowing what our data are, having overall targets for increasing overall diversity within the system, and ensuring that we have processes in place that will get us to those same percentages of individuals who are in the pool being hired.
I mean, I understand about human resources, legal limitations, you know, you used the word quota. I do understand that, but at the same time, we are setting our goals based upon whites versus non-whites. If that is acceptable, but not going further, that part is still very questionable in my mind. If it is acceptable to set a goal for overall diversity of white versus non-whites, why not is, why is it not acceptable to go even further? That's my, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Evans.
So I'll start with a glow that I do appreciate these metrics are drilling down deeper to what I think we've had since I first joined the board seven years ago, so I am happy to see some of the progress here. But to my colleagues, if this is coming to us, I know we had some heartburn when we originally wanted to be voting publicly on the metrics, and whether or not this will still come back to the board for a vote on these improved metrics. Madam Chair, is that the case? So I will just tell you all then, this is an important work session, but I will tell you, if this is what we end up having in front of us, I can't support it, and I will be speaking to why. So in the time that I have for this first go-around, I will start with page seven of the report where it begins with the student success aspirational statement of all students will be successful in reading and math, and the metric is pass rates in those first two. Metric pass rate on SOL, pass rate on mathematics. I've said this before I joined the board, and prior school board members said this before me. This is a high-achieving school district, we cannot have metrics that are just on pass. We- We need to be willing, and we need to absolutely continue to measure where are we on pass advance. So I'm not saying you, you can't have that metric, but without having a pass advance rate, I think we are only touching the tip of the iceberg of what a high achieving school district's performance is versus what we're seeing among our subgroups. So I, I think that needs to change, and that was page seven, and the first two metrics. Next, page eight, the metric says percent of students who either pass a college level exam or earn an industry certification. We need to define what that means by a college level exam, because I'm not even sure exactly what we're referencing there, but it, it will be important for the public as well to know what, what we mean by that. And I also think that it's going to be important to disaggregate that by college level exam and by industry certification, so we see where there is some stratification there. Down below on that same page, achievement gap, percentage of students with plans for college and career on the senior survey, that also needs to be disaggregated again by the reputation of this as a high achieving school district where the, many, many of our students go on to two and four-year colleges. So blending it all in between college and career, that metric, as it's written, is extremely weak. When we've got 90% or more of everyone in the subgroups meeting it, that's not a metric we're having problems with, and we need to go deeper. So I think looking at disaggregated data, percentage of two-year tenants, four-year and college, and then you can certainly have the other one matters. And Ms. Kovacs just put me on for another go-back, because I've got more metrics to talk about.
All right.
The one thing I can address is the college level exams, and that refers to either AP or IB exams.
Just a very quick clarification on that, since, on page seven, the achievement gap demonstrating advanced performance, does that mean pass advanced? On page seven, because with the issue that you were bringing up, on achievement gap, it says AAP students demonstrating advanced performance, does that mean pass advanced?
On that metric, that only has to do with students participating in AAP, yes.
But that is.
It's pass advanced.
That's pass advanced for the, on the slide presentation, yes.
Okay, thanks.
I believe that Ms.
I believe Ms.
McLaughlin was looking at the larger packet.
The larger study.
And so when you look at the larger worksheet, page seven was not AAP. Page seven was a different set of data, but, but we've noted that.
So the equivalent in the other packet is page 11.
To clarify from what Ms. Strauss said versus what I said, I'm talking about the overall population. Ms. Strauss, that metric will only be measuring students in AAP, and that hardly captures our, our general population of 190,000 students.
You go.
So that, that's been noted, I don't know.
All right. Sandy, Ms. Evans.
Well, thank you. I first wanted to thank you for all your work to continually improve the metrics that we have in our strategic plan. That's, we, we strive to improve all the time, and I think we have with some of these new metrics. I did want to point, I won't repeat what's, the points that some of my colleagues have made. If you could pull up page 20 of the baseline targets worksheet. As you know, this, this is a particular, yes, that, in the, yes, that's the, the page. If you could just pull it up a little bit more, I would be remiss if I didn't point out where we are with sleep, with 28% of our students at this point reporting healthy amounts of sleep. That's quite an ambitious target that we have for school year 20, 19, 20, to go from 28% to, to raise that by 24 percentage points. I, I appreciate that target. I would point out that in the youth survey, that we, we have seen improvements in the high school sleep, amount of sleep that they're getting, but we've also seen some, some issues with the middle school students, because of course, most of the middle school students went, went earlier. So I do think that this is an area that we have to address with the continuing early time for the middle school students. And my only question really at, at this point is, what is our strategy for achieving that target of 52% in another school year?
So I'll give Ms. Johnson an opportunity to, to chime in, but if I think back to our board meeting, our, our most recent board meeting, and Mr. Tignor, who was talking about our clinic aides and, and the availability of our clinics, and sometimes taking a nap because of the work that he's doing, you know, once he gets home. I know that one of our efforts is to, of course, look at homework and, and look at how our teachers are assigning homework to ensure that students have more time for sleep and other things when they get home, and not that they're up all night doing homework and/or up all night studying for exams. I know that that's a, certainly a culture change, not only for our teachers, but it's for our families and our students. We know, I don't have children, I know that people who do have children say that it's oftentimes their own children who are as competitive and trying to outdo other students, and so those are conversations that we certainly will have with our superintendent's advisory council of students to, of course, think about ways that we can help mitigate that. In years past, I've been part of discussions with that group who've been talking about, how do we have more time, be less competitive, and have different areas of focus? So those are, of course, areas that we can look at as we work to help provide more sleep for students, and I'm going to let Ms. Johnson weigh in with a few more ideas.
In addition to what Mr. Smith said, we are continuing to collaborate with instructional services and actually have a meeting scheduled for this week to meet with IS to determine what else we can do in addition to what Marty shared.
I, I would love to hear more about the results of that meeting. Thanks so much.
All right, Mr. McElveen, followed by Ms. Hines.
Thanks, Tammy. I have two things that I want to cover, and then I'll pass it along for comment. The first is on the modular piece. I'm glad that I will be slightly younger, not as old as Mr. Moon, certainly, when they, when we reach the zero mark. But, you know, with reference to the modulators, I, I do think for transparency, I think we should not include it in the number, but at least have fine print at the bottom to say that if we were to tackle those as well, this is what the timeline would look like. And I know that will require additional calculations, but I don't want us to come away from this with the public thinking that we've succeeded when we've reached zero trailers, because I think my colleagues would agree that while modulators are superior to trailers, they are not ideal. So I think that's something that we should consider. Secondly, you know, with reference to the young scholar and AAR, AART work, you know, as we move toward implementing AARTs and, and a full-time AART in all schools, and expanding the young scholars program, I think part of that discussion needs to be the expansion of the IB primary years program. And my, my sense is that our goal for that should at least be, at the very minimum, to have that implemented in all of the schools that vertically articulate to a, a full IB program at the high school level. And I know that's not part of this conversation, but I think it should be. And then my final question would be on the getting to 100% at, at all subgroup in terms of offering AAP services. My question would be, do we extrapolate that to mean that we should have equal representation at TJ of all of those subgroups? And if you don't have an answer, that's fine, but I think it's.
So I don't have an answer for the TJ question at this point. I know that when you're asking about the IB in the primary years program, we've brought you some costing for the expansion of our AARTs in our schools. As part of the budget process, you, you know that to expand to our, our Title I schools is about $1.6 million. To expand to our, all of our schools, it's about $6.3 million. And then if we were to look at the feeder patterns for our IB schools and look at ensuring that we had the primary years programs and/or middle years programs in that pyramid, we could certainly cost that out for future consideration for the board. As you look at expansion of other ways that we could ensure that students have access to a rigorous, more rigorous learning environment, so we could certainly bring that to you in the future. And then as part of a next step, we could certainly answer your TJ question.
Thank you. So Eileen, I would have two next steps, would be capturing the modular statistic, even if it's just for our purposes, and also those.
The primary, are you looking solely at primary, or are you looking at primary and middle year?
Well, I, I think the conversation should be all-inclusive, but, you know, for the purposes here, we're talking about elementary.
Sure, so we can look at the PYP.
I, I'm gonna, Ms. Hines, and then I'm gonna insert myself in, because I have to leave for a community meeting, and then we'll go on, and Ms. Strauss and Mr. McElveen will do, deal with go-backs. So Ms. Hines, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll be quick. Thank you, Ryan, because I think, actually, I know of one school in my area that rather than do local level four, is working on the primary years program, you know, for IB, because it is an IB pyramid, South Lakes, you know, high school pyramid. And so I have some sense of what that cost is, you know, at the school level, and it's not insignificant. It's, it's a lot of training, and then there's just a check you have to write every year to the IB people, you know.
Training, there's a coordinator there.
Yeah, there's a lot to it. But I think, when we look at this metric, and this is, I, I think what you were talking about, Mr. McElveen, on page 10, which is number of schools offering local level four instruction, if maybe that aspiration could have a little asterisk, and we could think about saying it's either local level four or the PYP program, and then local elementary schools could choose which advanced kind of, we could talk about that anyway. I mean, that's kind of the way I'm thinking about it. So if we had a sense of how much it costs for each school to become a PYP, that might help for us to make that decision. My questions are on page 10, same page. I really appreciate the third metric there, and this is on page 10 of the metrics. If we could get that up there possibly, sorry, page 10 of the metrics. The percent of classrooms where students receive instructional experiences using AAP curriculum. I apologize that I wasn't here when you presented, and if you've already answered this question.
And so I did say that we, our aspiration would be at 100%.
100% out in 22, 24. Okay, thank you. Good, thank you. So if I could just ask, how are we measuring that receiving instructional experiences using AAP curriculum? What's your best thinking about the best way to measure that?
So currently, our AARTs, they provide a report to the AAP office at the beginning of each year. It's a plan for the lessons that are being used and in which classrooms, at which grade levels. And so we would start with a baseline to, to ask the right questions of our AARTs to get that information from schools. And then once we get the baseline information, then develop the metrics to ensure that we are expanding the number of AARTs in our building so that they can drive that work. And then to also help our AARTs embed that work within the planning cycle and the planning process within buildings, to be there to provide possible team teaching opportunities, to provide additional push-in opportunities within schools. So it would be part of a process to, to expand, but we'd first have to establish that baseline. We have a mechanism for doing that. It's given us a lot of different data in the past. We just have to ask the right questions to figure out exactly how many classrooms it's in, to figure out how to move it forward.
Right, thank you very much. I think with that addition to these metrics, I'll be happy to support all of the work that you all have doing, I've been doing, and I, I appreciate the extra effort that you have made, you know, to respond to everyone, including my concerns about the initial list. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I do want to say I am, you know, the, the metrics on the advanced academic program, I am very happy about these increases. As many of you know, I have been a real advocate for enhancing, making sure the young scholars program, and making sure kids have the opportunity to get, have, have the opportunity to use advanced academic curriculum, even if they, you know, are not identified as such, because I think that's one of the most important things we can do. So I'm very happy about that for, you know, that was one of the reasons I have the current budget amendment out there with Ms. Hines about the advanced academic resource teachers, because this has been something that APAC, our, our advanced academic program, is Advisory Council, has recommended for many, many years, probably since 2013, I think, making certain that, because the more we have, the, the more teachers we have, the more advanced academic resource teachers we have, the more ability they have to be able to actively look for kids who are showing academic potential, advanced academic potential. I think that's really important. And, you know, I'll just tell you how disproportionate it was, and I, and everybody knows, my son is a grown young man now, but when my son was in elementary school, his elementary school, they used to call them itinerant GT teachers. She came once a month. A school, a five-minute drive from my house, had this happening three times a week. They had advanced curriculum, and it, it's, you know, it's the way we allowed at that point, and I know we're tightening this up, but, you know, it was the way we allowed principal's discretion. It was, it was very loosey-goosey, and it was a disservice to kids. I, I don't know how I feel as we're talking about these IB primary years versus, you know, just the regular AAP curriculum, if it's in a pyramid, because I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I think we need to flesh that out. But I do think the TJ conversation has to happen if we are looking at this. I do not think, because, and maybe, you know, if we do this the right way, it will naturally not happen as much. But right now, oh, I'm being optimistic, Ms. McLaughlin. But right now, you know, the disparity again and again, year after year, with some middle schools getting in 50 and 60% of the TJ population, and others, year after year after year, getting in zero kids, five kids, 10 kids. That's been going on for years. And if we're talking advanced academics, and we're talking how we're going to, and best practices, we have to look at the TJ issue. TJ is a fabulous school. I never want to do away with TJ. I think it's an amazing opportunity for kids who want that, but there is something amiss in the way we allow that to happen. And I think we would talk about advanced academics, we have to talk about that. And the other thing, I guess, and I'm having, I'm sorry, I'm trying to manage this meeting and talk in my notes, like, when you talk about making certain that kids have access to advanced curriculum, there's also that teacher training cost, right? And so how do we, how, how are we going to do that? It's not just the advan, so is it going to be a train the trainer kind of thing? Is the AART teacher going to train teachers in that curriculum? Or, I mean, I know teachers who are primarily at the center, we. Or, I mean, I know teachers who are primarily at the center, we encourage them to get certification in Advanced Academic Programming. So how would that work to ensure that we have teachers who are, who are really understand how best to teach the advanced curriculum?
So at this point within the plan, we're looking to get the metrics and targets approved. And once we get that finalized from the board, we then start the work of the action plans as, in terms of the, how are we going to accomplish this work? We're already having those conversations. We have a very good meeting planned tomorrow for our leadership team meeting, where we're going to go through a sample template action plan to start talking about what this work looks like. And for each one of these areas, there would be an accompanying action plan. So I would then expect that Dr. Presidio and his team would be, would look at the expectations from the board, and then develop that action plan. And then as part of our new process for reporting, and you will see that with the premier workforce report, you'll get our progress on the targets and metrics. And there's also a section that will actually explain our progress and our actions toward that. So I can't explain exactly what that would look like now. What I can say is that by having those AARTs in the building, they could provide some type of support for school or for teachers in the buildings, but we do recognize that there would be additional costs for training, as I talked about with summer institutes and coursework that, that teachers would need in order to do this work well.
All right, thank you. And then the next one is Ms. Palchak.
Thank you. I appreciate the work on this, and I know, while it's not perfect, I think we've gone a lot farther in some of the goals that we asked for, specifically when it comes to these targets. I was a little disappointed last time in seeing some pretty low targets for our groups, knowing especially the research out there is showing the higher goals, the higher you will go, even if you don't get there on your target year and your aspirational year, it means that we will get further along. And so I think in a county where we have such high achievement, not seeing that across our student groups is a continued frustration. So this is where we measure it, and now, you know, I hope we continue to work to the programs that will get us there. So whether it's Braddock, whether it's, you know, IB programs, whether it's local AAP and Spanish, which I love at Braddock, or other things that really are this portrait of graduate. So that being said, I have a few, I think my colleagues have mentioned many, a few very specific questions. One that I'm wondering about when we're talking about, Mr. Moon's question about our future workforce. This is more of a wonder that I thought of maybe for the future, as we try to, as we implement more of our, build our own programs for our staff, especially our teaching staff. It might be beneficial to start to show that progress on our premier workforce goals and targets, because there are very few places probably in the world as diverse as ours here in Fairfax County. So I think the more we are building our own, hopefully the more our workforce will represent the community. So that might be one, to start to see what's working, what's not, how are we, are we making gains by supporting and funding these programs? So that's just one more of a future, I guess, impact. And I'd love maybe if you could report back on ways we could start to look at and incorporate that here. Whoever brought up TJ, I think it was in this Darren at COFAX, that was actually my question, is we, you know, have been trying to find ways that we can address our admissions at TJ. I know we keep being told over and over again, we need to start early on. And I think the efforts here are to start with access and equity earlier on in the process is one way to address that. And I guess I'm, I was channeling Ms. McLaughlin, and I'd like to see the results of that. So I do hope that we can start to incorporate as we grow some of this programming and equity earlier on in our students' careers, is that having an impact? And hopefully we make some adjustments before that. But so if we could start to track impacts, because when we hear it, I want to see, is this really making a difference for TJ admissions? And then finally, a couple of things on the targets. I appreciate, and I'm not sure which page it was on, but where we're going to, our goals being that we have equity across, across all of our subgroups. I know that was not there in an earlier draft, so I do appreciate your changing that. I know some of that is aspirational now, but hopefully that's not aspirational in the future. And so while we have our baseline, and it's, we have quite a ways to go, I think it's important. I don't know which draft we're on.
You're talking about the AAP participation, where we see at or above 25% across the board.
Yeah, I think that's one of them, there was perhaps others, but the main one being the AAP participation, whether it be local or non-local, that we do have equity in our groups across that. And then one question, I just had a chance to review the email from our, our public who has left us, from Walt, the question around technology. So the page where we had computer access for all of our high schoolers, which is, I think is an important goal. There was a question from Mr. Carlson about students not just having the technology in the hands, but if we could look at, I know there was a report about Baltimore County, if we could get kind of staff response to some of what was published, and if we feel that additional support at home and technology is feasible would have helped with some of the issues that were faced in Baltimore County? And if we could look at a plan for how we do support our students once they have that access, so.
We could look at that as a next step.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin for a go-back?
Thank you. So going back, and I'm sorry that we're working off of two different documents, this was just easier to get down to the greater detail.
That's why we posted both documents for your ease of use.
Yeah, so I'm working off of the more detailed document for the metrics. So picking up on the page 11, where it talked about the percentage of students participating in AAP, I would suggest that we should be disaggregating that and being able to identify those who are participating in a center versus local level four. I do think that there is some question about, again, students being able to access our centers, and so that would be at least important to look at and see where those numbers differ. And then on the next metric, where it said percent of AAP students demonstrating advanced performance in reading or math on SOLs, I think those should be disaggregated by reading versus math. I don't think they should be lumped together, because again, we're trying to see where there might be gaps. And one isn't necessarily, you know, seeing those gaps at where they are should be separated out. On the next page 12, the metric below, was percentage of students who demonstrate proficiency in Algebra I by eighth grade. My colleagues, if you'll notice, that the baseline is essentially 92% above. I don't think that's a targeted metric then. I mean, if we're seeing 92% or more students, then why aren't we focusing something that's, you know, a little bit more where we have, have a gap? That to me is just a celebration point, but it's not actually addressing opportunity gaps. So I would just try to understand. From what I know, first of all, the reason what's wrong with that metric is it's saying demonstrate proficiency. First, we should, we should define what proficiency means. Is that getting a C or above? Is it just not failing the class? So we need to know what proficiency means. And number two, that's not capturing how many aren't in it. That's just saying who finally got there. So I think that's a metric that needs to be reworked. On page 13, the second metric has the same problem again, percentage of students who demonstrate proficiency in one or more honors courses. That's not the problem. It's, it's going to be, again, looking at what does proficiency mean? So I think that needs to be redefined and, or more clearly defined, so we understand what it is you're going to measure. And it may be that telling us proficiency means they didn't fail the class, I don't think that's necessarily... Well, it's the problem with the tiny print, so I, I do think that we need more clear language on that, even if you have a footnote. So then you can go to the metric on, let's see, fast forward up to caring culture, if we can go to page 19. It's the percent of students who report three or more assets. You, you know, you guys, I don't understand why no one else, or some people are saying, this looks great, we're all good to go. This isn't disaggregated by race, poverty, or students with disabilities. I mean, it's all just swirled in together. So we need to find out how are our students doing in, in the different subgroups, because I think that's going to be very telling. If, if you're not having these assets, it can really affect student achievement. So I think, Mr. Moon kind of captured it in earlier, his remarks, we do a good job on student achievement, talking about where we disaggregate. And then when we got to employee premier workforce, we stopped disaggregating. And I would say the same thing happened in Goal Two, where we didn't disaggregate anything. It's all just everyone together. And so I've, I made a note on every page for Goal Two, that should all be disaggregated, similar to the Goal One data points. And then on page 24, for the metrics on our premier workforce, you know, again, we should be disaggregating based on, on gender and race for looking at these, these targets. And page 25, I would also say that it shouldn't just be teacher applicants. I think we wanted to show our community that there's 28,000 full-time employees in Fairfax County, and it goes beyond just the 14,000 teachers. So I guess, you want to put me down for one more go-back? Okay.
May I, Ms. Strauss?
Yes.
One thing I may need help from the board on. We've been trying to take the strategic plan from what it was to a new level. We've done two-by-twos multiple times. And the great thing is, this board's so talented, every time we bring it to you, there's more, there's more questions and more insights. I just wonder going forward, I want to be able to tell this organization where we're headed. And I want to do it prior to the end of this year, so they can get ready to be aligned for next year. And just to be thinking about during this, I mean, this is just collaborating and being a thought partner. I like your ideas. And I like ideas that have been shared, but I'm trying to think realistically in the workload, much like on the budget, where we have amendments and then we have some follow-ons. Is there some of this work that we can look at as follow-on work and still move forward? We brought it to you in the fall, there was, hey, can't, can't, can't move forward. We met two-by-twos. Just be thinking about that, because I really would like to be able to at least get a version. I don't want it to be 2020, and the 2020 budget comes out, and I'm telling folks, you need to meet this, and you have six months to do it. So that's a little bit of, I'm just being, and I'm, it's, it's all just listening today, trying to think about how to get all of this additional work done in time for you by the next board meeting, which is when I think we had it for new business, and then action at the other one. So be thinking about that amongst yourselves, and maybe we can talk about as a leadership group. I'd love to be able to say whatever we can get done, ensure that we could, and some of it, where we had, like even the one metric that Marty and Levy had shared with you under development, some of it could be a follow-on or an aspirational, that we'd look to put that in the next reiteration in the fall, or whenever you would want us to bring it back, which I assume would be annually.
Dr. Braybrand, I just want to say, I appreciate what you said, but I don't, I can't speak for what my colleagues got in their two-by-twos or their one-by-ones, but I did not have an opportunity to sit here and do what I've just done in today's work session. Had I done that, I would certainly have given this feedback. I haven't strayed from my public remarks when we postponed this. And so my, my remarks here are consistent with what I said before. I, I think you're wanting to strive toward a more substantive, meaningful, strategic plan. I'm not asking to layer on more work. I'm trying to simply share with you and my colleagues that I think some of these metrics are simply not substantive and meaningful enough. And if the board as a whole agrees with you and what this draft is, that's okay, that's what, but I wanted to be transparent with you in the work session of, here are my reservations. And I, I do think that for seven years, I have been consistent, and the voters, at least in my district, know that I want our data to be meaningful.
Karen Keys-Kamara?
I just want to follow up, and I think this may address some of your concerns, Dr. Braybrand. I have not had my two-by-two, I think it keeps getting rescheduled. But I'm looking for connections to the deficits we see in these numbers and how we are specifically addressing them. Ms. McLaughlin brought in page 12, where it says the access gap in percentage of students who participate in Algebra, 42% for African-Americans, 34% for Hispanic, 80% for Asian. And I would posit that that is reflective, that not having that Algebra background are leading up to that buildup, which I have to say, as a parent of three African-American young men, I had to argue to get my kids into some of those higher classes. And I don't know if that's widespread, I can just tell you that was my personal experience. But that impacts what you can do later on. And so I'm looking for those connections where we know things like math, and getting kids to that Algebra level is fundamental for them to be able to move on to those Advanced Academics. I'm looking for ways that we can address those deficits, because I think that these are areas that, where we're falling down, and then kids get to the later grades, and they simply don't have the fundamental things that they need to succeed. So for me personally, that's a, that's a clear link that I'm looking for.
Thank you, Ms. Hines?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I do think we kind of, being strategic means at some point, pin it to the wall, and let's do some work on it, right? And we kind of have to coalesce around something. And I think we also, it's hard to have this conversation without asking, we'll go, how are we going to get there, right? It's not enough to have the measure out there, what are the... And so we're having a metrics conversation that begs all these questions about the how, right, which is a little bit tricky, I think. I just wanted to mention, respond to one thing that I heard, and that is on, I think Ms. McLaughlin mentioned, that pass rates on reading and math SOLs are not a rigorous enough standard for us. And, you know, I guess what I would respond to that as a teacher would be that I actually don't have enough faith in SOL tests to let them drive instruction to that degree. I think if we want to have more rigorous standards, that's great. I think we should. I think I've said that since I got on the board, that SOL pass rates are not a rigorous, or really all that reliable standard, right, for our kids? But, so I wondered, my question is, are there other things that we're doing in reading and math in terms of like performance assessments that are, we think are better measures along the way? And could we dipstick some of those and say, and at this point, I would not recommend changing the metrics, but this is just to think about going forward, rather than expecting advanced pass for every kid on SOL, something different? Is that something that we've thought about, or, I don't know?
So the answer is yes. And I think that as we move forward, as we look at the plan, we're looking for guidance from the board and a stamp of yes. We're looking for the stamp of yes, so that we can begin the work of the how, begin the work of the action plans, begin the work of, once we get into it, realizing that, oh, maybe we need to adjust here, adjust there. And that, that's the critical next step for this work. As part of our reporting process, board members are going to see that how. And then as we bring those quarterly reports, and wanting to make sure that those quarterly reports are meaningful, when I say quarterly, it's how they're going to fall, but those... reports are meaningful, when I say quarterly, it's how they're going to fall, but those goal reports to you, that they're meaningful, and that they provide the level of discussion and interaction that you need as a board to be able to make decisions. So that there is, Ms. McLaughlin, we've been hearing you loudly and clearly for years about analysis, and we've clearly built in an area around analysis in the new templates moving forward. We've built in, again, information around the action plans and the how. And so I think that for some of this work, while we're doing a lot of it, there are new things here, where we're going to develop the processes moving forward, that it might be premature for us to get too deep into the how at this point. But certainly, a strategic plan is created for our accountability. It is your accountability as a board, it is our accountability to you, and it's accountability to our students and our families. And so as we say that this is what we're going to do, we would then have the opportunity to implement, come back, and get as deep as we need to into the work, to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So I wouldn't want to get too far ahead of the hows, but yes, there are other performance assessments. We've got teams working on performance-based assessments that we could certainly bring back as part of this process. And that, as a board, you will see that in the reporting structures moving forward. And you'll have that opportunity coming up in our first premier workforce goal report. And then you can give us feedback on that first one, and say, you know what, this isn't going to cut it for us, we need a little more here, or a little more there. But right now, we're asking for the yes, so that we can start the work.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Just want to remind people a little bit of how we got here. This was first on our agenda back in July for adoption. We actually then separated out the focus chart from the more details, because we wanted to have a deeper dive on the metrics. I'm a little concerned, and I don't disagree with any of my colleagues around the table, that we could continuously refine the metrics. But I'm a bit concerned that we are getting caught up in a cycle focused on refining metrics, rather than saying, okay, look at where we're at now, what are the, a couple of things maybe that we want to change to strengthen the metrics between now and adopting this? And then realize that as with all strategic plans, this is an iterative process. And so as we go forward, and we have some studies and responses back from staff on how they're going to implement the plan, and then report back to us on our success or lack thereof in the plan, we will continue to refine the process. But I am very concerned that we are possibly looking at kicking the can down the road a bit more, rather than saying, okay, what, what are the things, what are those things that people have discussed today that are must-haves to have the board adopt this plan, ideally, and it's coming as new business on the 21st, and then it will be adopted at the first board meeting in March? And if what people are saying today is that there's so much work done, work to be done on this plan, that we have to kick the can down the road beyond March, then we need to take a pulse of the board today to determine that, because then I think we have to look at our schedule and what our work program's going to be over the next month. And so that's the only reason I am raising this, because we have been looking at this for a long time, and this is the first set of metrics, but we will continue to refine them. And if people, after the first report, say, it's not enough, let's amend the report, amend the plan, then we can do that.
Thank you, Ms. Keys. Ms. Corbett Sanders to me, Karen's. I just briefly wanted to give a little bit of a, sort of where we have come over time. On the one hand, trying to move away from single data points, from standardized tests, and we've come a long way from that. And a lot of the data that we've seen today has much more to do with opportunity and access, and with metrics that are actually, help us take a look at that, because that is, that's critical. Students cannot learn something if we don't teach it. One interesting piece of research, which none of you know, because you probably weren't born yet, major research in the early 90s showed that the majority of kids could learn algebra in eighth grade. It used to be only a ninth-grade course. And that opened the door for, and we also, in Fairfax County, took the math curriculum off of the Gifted Center program. In other words, you can have access to whatever math, it led us to compact math, but it means that there is the expectation that as many students as possible will take algebra in the eighth grade, because that opens up the rest of the algebra program. And if you don't have algebra by eighth grade, and there's some who are not going to, it is a real gateway to it. And then, of course, what's happened beyond that is, we have youngsters in fifth grade and sixth grade taking algebra. But at any rate, you don't have to be center identified to be able to take the appropriate level of challenge in mathematics, which is important. Ms. Corbett Sanders, I think I would like to, before we go to next steps, because I do think, as you said...
Ms. Strauss, I did have a go-back still.
Do you want one more go-back? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that part. All right, Ms. McLaughlin, you can have a go-back.
I wanted you to be able to finish. I just didn't want you moving on to something else.
No, that's okay. I will, I will give myself a go-back. You go ahead and have a go-back.
You indicated you were moving on, so I'm not trying to interrupt you. I would prefer that you continue.
Well, I was going, by the time we finish everybody's go-bags, to get a sense of the board, are we ready to move forward? I think we do need to have an indication. Staff have worked long and hard on this. In my sense and listening to the board, we're not perfect, it's iterative, we want to come back to that. But I think we do need to leave this work session with a sense of, let's bring it forward, and, and then if people wanted to continue to work at it. But before we do that, sense of the board, why don't you go ahead and share what you wish to share?
And let me, if I could, real quick, whatever we can do in the next week, I mean, to take the spirit of things that everyone has said we could, and then we could look at doing some of the other things. Some of it, when we report the goal, even if we don't have the metric disaggregated, we could have on the goal reporting some additional disaggregation beyond the metric as it's listed. You know, some of the stuff like that. And then if there's ones that we really take a look at over the next several days, and it's going to take more time, and we just acknowledge it, or we'll make some notation somehow through this, that there's some other areas that are under development that we'll be looking at in the plan. I hope that could capture the spirit of what a lot of you have said, while still letting us say to our organization, here is where the board has put the marker down, and here's where we start moving from what to start to get some how. Otherwise, I'm worried, just in the accountability piece, that what you've expected me to do, I'm not making the wheels, and you know, this is a big organization, to get the wheels moving of where we want people to start to head, and know, I want people really to be seeing this in March and April, so they can start their decision-making process of how, about how they're going to execute for next school year. So that's just something to think about, and we'll take a look at everything that everybody has said today, and do as much as we, we think we can in a week's process, and maybe figure out how we can have a few things as follow-ons, or the spirit of a follow-on for future goal reporting, or for future strategic plans.
Okay, so I'll go back to Ms. McLaughlin, then I'm going to take a sense of the board, and then we'll go to next steps. Okay, Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. The reason that I had wanted to go back was because I'm concerned about how some of this has been characterized. I certainly don't think that my input had anything to do with advising that we kick a can down the road. I don't think that was at all helpful to the dialogue. I don't think this was about pushing something off for yet again, some indeterminate amount of time. I, as Ms. Keys-Gamaro noted, I don't think I've had my sit-down, and here's the draft, and are you okay with this, and anything you want to do? So that's what the work session is for. We're to share with not just the superintendent, but with each other. I've never been a champion of SOLs as a metric and a measure, so to Ms. Hines' point, the bottom line is, the report has an SOL as a metric. And I'm just saying that if we're looking at closing achievement gaps, the pass rate is not where the gaps are the most egregious, they're at the pass advance. And so I'm saying, if this school division thinks that SOL pass rate is a metric to use, I was looking to enrich the metric. A lot of this is not creating extra work. We already do it, we already have the data, it's just having Mary Beth Love class run that set as well. And the analysis should be getting done by the division, whether the board asked for it or not. This isn't nothing new for a lot of us. But I'm just more concerned that there's, the undercurrent from what this has been is, it's the boards holding us back from doing our work. I wanted to be transparent with the superintendent, with all of you, and with staff, that when we get to the board table and vote on this, people wouldn't say, boy, I wish Megan had spoken up sooner, because now she's up there saying she thinks that this strategic plan is not reflecting the best that, what this division can do. And I'll just close with this, we know we live in one of the highest per capita college graduates in the country, here in Fairfax County. And I will caution board members, we will get judged on the strategic plan, and people are not necessarily kind to us about it at times. And then what I get from our colleagues is, well, you voted on it. So I was just trying to be transparent, saying, I can't vote with what I see here. And if people are worried that it's kicking a can down the road, no problem. I just felt that I owed it to all of you and the superintendent to explain where my concerns are. And I do hope that my review of this was meaningful and helpful in some way.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just going to take a quick sense of the board, how many folks, knowing that this is a process, are willing to go forward with this as a strategic plan, knowing that it's...
Mrs. Rose, could I just make one quick comment?
Sure.
I mean, I fully understand where Mrs. McLaughlin is coming from, and I also understand that we have invested 18 months of our time to get to this point. My suggestions to my colleagues is, move forward with what we have, and strategic plan is a living document. We can, you know, within the next six months, if it takes us six months, we can update it, wherever we have a consensus on, because as I stated earlier, there are certain areas that I'm not 100% sold on, but at this point, there's enough in there for us to make some decisions, so that our staff, as superintendent stated, I could start making plans, making decisions to move on. That is my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. So a sense of the board, how many people are ready to move forward with this? Okay, thank you. And that gives direction to staff, and then if we will take a look at next steps.
Ms. Strauss, to clarify, and superintendent, if we do not move forward on this, technically we are still working with our old strategic plan, correct?
Well, we did, the board voted on the strategic plan focus, but we don't have the metrics, we don't have the measures. And what I want to do, we just had Dr. Ivey and Mr. Smith were a little late this morning. You know what they were doing? They were working on our school improvement plan, to align the school improvement plan with these revised metrics. So our principals get this at the April all-county principals' meeting, so they begin to get their school directed based on this work for next year. So that's the spirit.
I guess the only thing I am wondering, because I think to us, it's clear that it's a work in progress, and it's kind of a first...
Communicating it, so to the division.
If we can really communicate that more clearly, both in the plan, in the motion, and how we're going to bring this forward.
Maybe we can have a preamble that gets at the spirit of everything that Megan said, and Janie said, and Mr. Moon, around this living document, and the aspiration to keep looking at it and to make sure, even the community will react to it once it's formally done. So, understood.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay, can we look at the next steps? Was there one more?
Yeah, just real quick.
Yes.
Based on that, I think what we want to do is, the next step at the bottom, the last one, would be adding that we would have a semi-annual review of the metrics in the plan for...
I would say, clearly communicate that this is a work in progress and an initial step forward, to be followed by...
A semi-annual review.
Semi-annual review.
That's exactly what I was planning on.
That would be as an introduction to this.
Yes, as part of the intro, yeah. Clarify in the preamble.
Okay, so in that, it would be, clarify in the preamble to the strategic plan.
Yeah.
That the plan is...
A living document.
And will be reviewed...
On a semi-annual basis, to refine metrics over time.
Sure.
Yes. So the only thing I'm concerned about is, what, Scott, what you just talked about, is how this, what we're doing today, will find its way into classrooms, right? Which is that principals will be given the school improvement plan challenge, right? To make all this fit into their school improvement plans. And you know, there's that feeling always in the buildings, that, oh, more stuff is raining down from above, and nobody's taking anything off my plate, and if it's just going to change in six months, why should I bother? So I think we have to be careful to say, even though this is a living document, we will let it live and breathe for a while. Because the worst thing to do, I think, is initiative fatigue, where you're constantly slapping people with something new.
Ms. Hines?
An annual basis?
I don't know that we should tie ourselves to anything right now. I think we should say it's a living document, and as needed, you know, over time, these metrics may change. That's all.
I think you've made a good point, because teachers' work will be in their own evaluation. Everything will be based on the metrics that we have in this.
This is truly a strategic plan that lives in the classrooms, then we've got to be aware of how that affects people in the classrooms.
Well, could I, could I suggest that we say at least annually? Because I do think as a strategic plan, it does need to be reviewed at least annually.
That the metrics need to be reviewed annually, because that's what we're talking about.
The whole thing. I think if we went more than a year reviewing it, I think that we...
That's fair. Okay.
And the previous plan, the previous structure was that we had an annual review going into the next year, and then you would have an annual review of each goal area when we brought the reports to the board.
Okay. Does that, is that comfortable?
Just want to say, Dr. Ivey's comments were captured in that.
I just was going to say that in our meeting today, as we looked at the school improvement plan and the strategic plan, we were very mindful of your comment about it not being overwhelming, and really trying to identify the new areas aligned with the current work, but also connecting to the work that we have been doing.
Okay, so I'll run us through the next steps?
Please do.
Okay, great. So if you could scroll up slightly, so we can see one, which is Ms. Corbett Sanders. Does that look good to you? Okay. All those in favor of breaking out data between centers and young scholars' programs in schools? Okay, great. Onto number two. Do you want to combine yours and mine?
Yeah, I think you and I can say the same thing, so let's just...
Sure. Okay. Yeah, great. So I would just, on hers, just on page 10, and then comma, use my thing. Yes. And then just, it can be Corbett Sanders/McLaughlin, that's fine, which doesn't matter. All those in favor of on page 10 capturing the additional timeline and costs for eliminating modular as a corollary to the trailer data? Okay. Number three, providing the cost per year for primary and middle-year IB programs for IB pyramid schools? Okay. Number four, Dahlia?
It's more than the cost strategy of how you would lay it out as well. A cost and a timeline for introducing primary and middle-year IB programs.
I think that, isn't that a little premature?
That's a lot of work, too.
That's a lot of work, yeah. So I think let's just, I think for this, at this point, just the cost.
It's taking the cost in my district five years.
Right, yeah.
I mean, it's a lot of work.
Mr. Moon might not be around for that. Okay, number four. Slow progress.
So mine, I don't know if it can be incorporated now, it's more as we do our workforce initiatives for building our own, to think about incorporating for the future, so I assume we're not there yet.
We could look at that as part of a recruitment metric.
Future, yeah, if we, yeah, I think if we put future, and see how it impacts diversity.
Future recruitment metrics? Future recruitment metrics?
Sorry, to clarify, metrics within the report, or in general?
So that we would develop, provide that information to the board, how we're developing our own teachers, how we're, how many students are taking advantage of those programs?
I guess, I'm just, I, I, as we develop those programs, my goal is that future reports on this, to the strategic plan, show any progress we're making...
Yes.
...in our workforce diversity due to our, those recruitment efforts.
Due to those recruitment efforts, internal recruitment efforts, or we're...
Yes.
Developing our own.
Our own.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of showing progress in addressing workforce diversity in goal-free reports as part of future recruitment metrics? Okay. Number five, Paul Chik, you fine with that? Okay, all those in favor of showing if earlier focus on equity is having an impact on TJ admissions? Okay, that goes, do you want to see?
I was gonna say, was that part of the strategic plan, or that's just a report back?
Well, and I know that Dr. Duran is working, uh, with his group on that, so we might be able to provide some import...
Okay.
...as part of our next steps.
Okay, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, next three, at least, are Megan's. Can you look in others?
And so, for Ms. McLaughlin's questions, I think that as we look at the data that we have available and the timeframe that we have, we will take a look at what we can add and, and amend to the strategic plan, and if it's not there, then we can certainly take a look at it down the road. But there are some constraints with, uh, with the complexity as it relates to pulling data and different data sets, uh, that, what I'm finding is that there is much time and effort involved in pulling some data set. So, uh, we'll take a look at all of that, and what we don't see, we could certainly have future conversations around as a board and staff.
Yeah, on page eleven, it was to disaggregate, um, the data, uh, it wasn't percentage of students participating in AAP, it was disaggregating those participating in the center versus local level four. Yep. And center versus local level four. And then the other one was just to disaggregate the, their advanced performance on SOLs for reading and math, 'cause right now it was, we just had reading and math lumped together. And I, I, again, don't understand why we would ever blur those, you have to pull them individually anyway, so just, don't collapse them in.
Ms. McLaughlin, I have, yeah, I have a question on that, whether or not we wanna put that into this particular plan, because you could, you can have center-eligible kids, and their parents elect not to go to the center.
Yeah.
So I, so I don't know, I mean, this is in, interesting information, do you mean to put it into the strategic plan, because that drives a different decision point that we may or may not want?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it, if, one of the things that I know this board and this division has been trying to figure out is where we have local level four, where are, are students choosing it more and more, and so therefore, how many are choosing to participate in the centers versus in local level four? So, I, I just, it, it doesn't, that one's not a data point that has to be created and done. Um, I just looked at how it was kind of collapsed in there. All of my input today was just, here's where it might be more meaningful and refined. I completely understand what Dr. Brabran said and others. I, I don't expect that my input today, many of it, will be taken into account if it's feasible under the tight timeline. Um, so...
Okay. As an information point? All right, thanks.
Well, again, I, I'm hopeful, maybe if nothing else, my input is meaningful to Dr. Brabran.
Okay, with, so with that, um, all those...
So if you want, you know, just, it, it's just, they can see what they can do. If you can't do it, it's too hard, it's not a problem.
We will see what we can do, and if it's there, you'll see it, and if not, we, we can have that conversation offline with you.
Consider it for the future. Yep, consider it for the future.
So should we vote on yours as a package?
Uh, sure, I just, I...
Okay, great.
Um, yeah, so then number eight was...
Oh, wait.
Defining proficiency, proficiency, when it's used as a measure. I mean, that, I just think we need to make sure the public and we're all clear on what proficiency meant.
Now, we can, that can be done.
Yeah.
Yes. So, yeah, there, there are things that, what we're finding, because of some comments from around the table, that there are items in the plan in our footnotes that we need to beef up, because the footnotes are a little small, perhaps don't explain as well. So we will, we're gonna make those bigger for our fifty-year-old eyes.
Right. So I will just say, I know I rattled off a lot, I'm looking at my package...
My fifty-year-old eyes.
Yeah. So, so for my colleagues, I'm noticing that there's four things listed there. I know it's all humorous, but I, I certainly had more than that, so I will send a private email to, or not, I'll just send a separate email to Dr. Brabran and, and Mr. Smith and Francis for, to capture what I did actually cite today, um, and I'll copy you all just for your reference. But yes, those four are accurate to what I wanted.
Eileen, can you scroll down, so we can see if the McLaughlin package continues?
It is, it's, that's it. There's only four, and I know there's a lot more, as you all heard me.
Okay, great. Um, okay, all those in favor of the McLaughlin package, please raise your hand, okay, for review. Okay, with that, this work session is adjourned. Thank you.